All right, well, the time is six o'clock and I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. Just a couple of notes for council and the audience. We do have a timed certain item at seven o'clock PM for agenda item number eight. If we get through all the items before then, we can go and take a break and come back at seven o'clock so that people who might be wanting to listen in for the timed certain item or be here for the timed certain item can attend. Another update, council, is that for item number ten, or item number nine, staff is actually recommending that we table that item until April 16th in order to, and staff will give an explanation, but when we get to that item, staff will, all that stuff, make their recommendation and then we could entertain a motion to table if we wish to. So with that, we'll go into staff reports and since we haven't had some for a little while, these are a little bit more extensive, what's that?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're on agenda number two, which is public comments, I almost skipped over that. If anybody would like to at this time speak to, not, item that's not specifically on the agenda or won't be here for our later agenda, please go ahead and stand up to the podium and make your comments at this time. All right, now we'll go on to staff reports and we'll begin with the administration report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to highlight a few items from the staff report. So Tyler Technologies, our ERP software, project is nearly complete, both modules are fully up and running, so all of our payables and finances are now being done in Tyler and we also have the human resources module up, so we're doing payroll in-house now. You know, it's, it's going smooth, there's always hiccups with these types of things and the last real piece of the project is to, which we had a technician from Tyler assigned to us and Kyle can maybe give me an update if, if that part is complete, but it's, it's making sure that the historical data, which is there, the historical data populates into our reports, which are essential for both budgeting and for presenting our financial statements, so I don't know if Kyle has an update, sorry for putting you on the spot.
Hi, Council. Like Matt said, we just had a meeting today to wrap up that part of the process and so supposedly it's, it's in there. I need someone to help me pull that information into the reports that we use, so that we're gonna just have time to do that, so there's gonna be a few more cleanup kind of steps, but yeah, we're basically, we have all the modules up and running, we're, yeah, conversion.
Yeah, so, so the plan for that is to then, once we can get our, our financial statements that, that show the historical, we'll take the quarter one and quarter two financial statements to Budget and Finance Committee for their recommendation at the end of the month, so you'll hopefully see those at the beginning of May, and then also we'll start doing our FY25 budget. Kyle is gonna meet with the department heads this week or next to start getting that ready so that we can have a draft operational budget for FY25 at our May 7th council meeting, I believe it, it will be a work session. We also heard from our auditor that the FY22 audit hopefully will be in our hands that, at the end of this week, so once we wrap that up, then we can begin engagement with our new auditors that received the award last year after the RFQ, so that we can begin work on the FY23 audit. Some events coming up, so April 8th is the solar eclipse, of course, it's a lot of buzz of activity. I attended a, a meeting, a regional meeting held by Travis County with, with city, city leaders, just as Travis County prepares for a very large influx of visitors. Chief also did an emergency briefing with Travis County, so we're prepared for that. Thankfully, you know, for our solar eclipse event here at City Hall, the residents don't have to travel very far and don't have to get on any major highways, but just be aware that there will be a lot of traffic and activity in the Austin-Travis County area that weekend. April 21st is spring fling at docks, docks backyard from three to five PM, so we hope that residents and their families can come out and enjoy that event. And then April 20, Saturday, April 27th is our 16th annual art fest at Tony Burger Center, 10 AM to 5 PM, so we hope that everyone can come out and if you have the ability and time to volunteer, we are still in need of volunteers for that event, so just ask me or ask Councilmember Medikus and we'll tell you how to sign up. One other item, so there, we attached some economic reports and the, this is a sales tax report that we've used for many years, however, it doesn't include crime control district revenues and so if, if you were confused of why the numbers were different, that, that is why the number is higher for March on this second page is because this report shows the, the actual collections with the, with the full picture of the sales tax, which includes the crime control tax. So as we're seeing, as, as we're trending, we're trending lower than last year, however, we are over budget, we still budget it conservatively, so we are 1% over the, the budget in terms of actual collections versus budget, but about 5% down from where we were this time last year. Any questions on the admin report?
Can you give a, a status update on the Engagement HQ?
Yes.
Project?
Yes, so Danielle has been working with our project coordinator with Granicus and she's worked on building out the, the branding side of things, getting all of our font logos and getting the look of the site and then both myself, Carolyn, Dakota, and Melissa will all work on various projects, so we actually hope that, that should be launched by the end of the month, like the, yeah, the, the site itself, like the core of the site is built out and now we just have to learn how to build out the project. So for example, we'll create a project page for Reimagery Brody, we'll create a project page for the City Hall backyard and any other upcoming CIP and parks and open space related projects. We will also create a city council project page and that is where agendas and other items of interest will be, will be posted and that is where residents can engage. It won't be exactly the same as, as Open Town Hall, but we're hoping to find some way that, that residents and members of the public can, can log in and, and leave their comments and participate virtually, so that should be, be launched by the end of the month.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Medikus?
I just had a question on the, the main webpage. The, under the visitor section up on that top right-hand corner, is there a reason we haven't been able to put the links to the retail centers on there so people can click on those and see the stores that are here?
Uh, we can do that, we can add that, those, those, those store, well, like the, these links here, the issue is, is that they're not always up to date. I, my recommendation would just be having like a, a Google map, because Google is probably more up to date than, than what the shopping centers have, like for example, the most recent on Kimco, sorry, the Village, is October 2023, that's, that's on their website, so, you know.
I know.
It's the danger of, it's the danger of having store directories is they're always out of date, so.
Right.
Google, having a, honestly having a Google map embed, kind of like, not dissimilar to, I mean, we have a GIS on our map, but probably having a Google map embed is, is gonna be the most accurate. I mean, we can't, we can certainly, we can certainly list these, but again, you know.
Yeah, I just thought linking to their site would at least be sending people to their site.
Right.
Rather than us trying to keep a map, because I know that didn't work.
Yeah.
In the past, but if there's a way we could have a, a Google map where people could see.
Yeah, we, we are, we are working on, on building that section out, however, we've, we've shifted focus to EHQ and GovDelivery, but we do know that the, the visitor section of, of the website is, is needing to be built out and completed, it was, it was never completed, so.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Other questions about the administration report? All right, moving on to Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just gonna highlight a few things in the Public Works report, we did put a big list of the projects and everything that we're working on in there. One of the things I'd like to highlight is AMI, I think we did our first residential AMI kind of integration and did the meter reads with that, there's still a few little bugs to work out, but I think that's going well, but the thing I need to ask everybody to do is to please sign up for the Eye on Water app, that is your way of tracking your water use, being able to, to set up leak detections and all of that, please tell all of your neighbors and friends and stuff that, to, to do that, we only have, I think, 27 folks signed up right now, so we'd like to get everybody signed up on that if possible. We have, I think we included the picture of the proposed new street signs in there, it's kind of taking together the two top, the top two most popular designs and created a kind of composite design from that. There's that one and then, I think there was one other thing, the storage yard, we do get a lot of questions on the storage yard, we are finishing up some of the notification stuff with TCQ, going back and forth with them, so as soon as we finalize everything, hopefully we'll be able to reopen the storage yard back up. The buildings were approved by the Austin City Council for the solar rebate, so that project should be moving forward, as far, we're working to finalize permitting documents for that, and if there's any questions on anything that was in the report, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thanks, Carolyn. Can I have a, ask a follow-up, follow-up about the AMI? Where do residents go to get information about signing up, was it in the most recent bill that was sent out?
It was not in this last bill, but it was in the bill before that and we're gonna send it out again with the bills that go out this month.
Yeah.
And so definitely, it was, we'll also, I'll go ahead and put it on the website, make sure it's on the website as well, so that people can follow that link and just sign up real easy, all you need is your account number and an email address and that's pretty much all you need, and if you need an account number, you can always call us if you don't know where your bill is or you do ACH or whatever it is and you don't ever see your bill, so just let us know and we can help you get that set up, so.
Great, yeah, I was one of those residents that missed the notice because I probably just took the bill out but didn't look at the.
Right.
Information, so resending it and also just making it available on the website with instructions would be wonderful.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that.
I know the question and this is just more, it's, it's great to see so many of the projects that we have in, you know, starting up again or, you know, in work, thank you for putting that list together, there's a lot going on in the city.
Yes.
And a lot going on in your department, so really appreciate, you know, the work that the Public Works Department is doing, but also just the status on everything. And for any of the residents, if you look at the backup, it's a good snapshot of all the information that we, we have about our projects and, and what's coming in the future. I did wanna say that I, I think the work on the street repaving in Jones and those areas, it looks really nice, I know they started putting the lines down this week and they're putting, filling in crosswalks and things like that, did, maybe it might, this is a question that has come before, I know that Councilmember Johnson has noted this too, but that intersection of Master Sergeant Horgan and Jones, I think is now even a worse alignment in terms of like, indicating where the cars are supposed to go.
Right.
So there's those two lanes that if you're going westbound, one that's the center lane and then the, the one on the right, or the north side is the right turn only, but the center lane is lined up with a turn lane on going west with the eastward traffic and the turn lane is lined up with, you know.
With the road, it's up.
So it's, yeah, it's, I don't know how we fix that, because that turn lane, you know, has to be there for accessing Master Sergeant Horgan, but I've seen a lot of cars with the confusion of, you know, they're in that center lane, they start driving forward and they realize they have to kind of get over, I, is that, you're, did you notice that too, or?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm looking at the intersection on Google Street View right now, because I don't remember it being that bad, it's like you literally have to like turn significantly in the intersection in order to get over, so.
They changed the lane widths a little bit, it all, kind of they're all equal parts now, to solve the problem of it appearing like you're coming head on to the other lane, they're gonna put down what they call cat tracks, so like, I'm sure you've seen it, like Tech Dot does it, when you have to like go across traffic, basically it'll be the center line dash, it'll be a dashed double yellow line through the intersection to, to kind of tell you to go that.
To guide you towards the right, right place, okay. Yeah, it, it's just something I noticed and I know they're still doing striping, but, you know, I was confused when I approached there, on the first time they, they had the initial striping.
And I think we just talked about adding some extra turn arrows and stuff in there, because I think right now they had the right turn arrows in there, I think we're gonna add the, maybe the straight arrows with the left turn and stuff on there, so that it's a little more obvious.
Great, and also really glad to see the, the solar rebate get approved by City Council and, or Austin City Council, so appreciate their support for that project. Council, other questions for Public Works? Councilmember Johnson?
I actually watched the, I went to see if Austin City Council deliberated, they didn't, it passed on consent, but I did notice they have live music at their, which is pretty cool, so, I'm not, no.
Like, is it?
I'm not suggesting, but it was pretty fun and.
Is it like interlaced between agenda items or is it?
No, it was like, it seemed to be towards the end, you know, they got, got through a lot of stuff and it was like this old blues, blues musician on the past one, so, and I'm gonna go check him out, his bird leg or whatever, but he was pretty cool, so, anyway, that's my two cents.
Councilmember Rosengard?
I just wanted to say, today they started demolishing the Red Robin.
They did.
Do you know, are they gonna salvage any of that, that building?
I mean, that is, that's, they got their demo permit, but we don't have anything to do with what they.
It's their property.
What they do with it, correct.
And, and they did have a flooded there, so there may be quite a bit of stuff that they can't salvage.
It's hard to see that, just being demolished, okay.
Councilmember Medikus?
I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the Public Works Department and PD for helping us with the art installations that were happening last week, I don't know if everybody got to see them, but we had a chainsaw sculptor here doing the tree on this side and then we had in front of PD, Averyo, who did the electrical boxes, doing a box there that, that, one that was all rusted and ugly is now really cool looking. So I just wanted to thank you guys for, for really helping out with that and fencing off the chainsaw area and helping with traffic.
I just wasn't sure what the art was when I drove up, I was like, is that a dinosaur? Surely that's not a dinosaur, you get closer and it's an armadillo standing on his back legs.
It's, no, it's a horse.
It's a horse?
No, no, the, the one, the mural on there, yeah.
Oh, right, armadillo over there and over here, it's an owl on the top, it's a equine on one side and it's a deer on the other side, it's an equine.
Could be a donkey, could be a horse.
That's true, yeah.
Councilmember Rob?
Yeah, I have a question for Carolyn, when the, when the collections facility opens, when it opens, will it be open for all the usual forms of disposal?
You will have a bulk dumpster there and there be, we'll have a new sign up that tells exactly what can be put in those areas, we'll have the metal dumpster, we're trying to still get that recycling dumpster and we'll, we'll have the brush, so all of that can be there. We will, of course, be paying a little bit better attention and have a little bit control over how much and what gets dumped in there, but pretty much most of the same, similar stuff, so.
Councilmember Johnson?
I, I think I was gonna mention this last time, but I, I have, of all the things I try to get feedback from residents from and they're just like, do whatever you want, man, you're doing a good job, but like, I hear so much about the fence that has gone up around that, people love that fence, it's like the nicest fence and we did it in-house.
Yeah.
So whoever did that, I mean, y'all did it, but like.
I, I'll, I'll let the, yeah, person who.
Yeah, so it is a very good fence, and I think, did they just stain it also?
Yeah, I think they must have stained it, correct?
Yeah, they stained it a couple of weeks ago, I think.
It looks great, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a really cool, yeah, it's a great fit, they did a really great job, and I just wanna real quick, give a shout out to, you know, all the, Manus X and all, everybody in Public Works for, you know, all the extra stuff they did over spring cleaning month, all the extra collections and stuff like that, they did a really good job trying to keep everything up to date and keep everything cleaned up.
Any other questions for Public Works? All right, moving on to public safety.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's not often that I get a lot of feedback from residents about issues in the city, but over the course of March, we had a few items that we had more than the usual amount of resident feedback on, I'll, I'll start with the Bodies Race that was held on Saturday, the 20, on the 16th. I'll start with the Bodies Race that was held on Saturday, the 20th, on the 16th, Saturday. It was one of the usual races that we've been having here in the city. This one was a half marathon and it was held on a Saturday instead of a Sunday. And I didn't realize how busy the city was on a Saturday morning, but we got quite a few complaints about some traffic delays, minor traffic delays, but just mainly inconvenience. The farmer's market was going on and it just wasn't as the usual smooth event that those have been. So going forward, the Police Department will most likely recommend that if those are approved, that it be on a Sunday rather than a Saturday here in the city. The second is we've, over the course of March and even into this month, we've had a pickup in incidents involving like criminal trespass, both in the shopping center and on private property. We think it's related to some of the illegal campsites around the city. We've made a few arrests for trespassing. But what I want to do is encourage residents to call 911. If someone is actually doing something and it's in progress, don't call the PD. That just delays the call. Call 911 for in-progress calls. We're going to try to put some, we will put something about that in the newsletter and try to get the word onto that. It seems like that kind of ebbs and flows where the residents will call 911 and then they'll get back into the habit of calling the Police Department for some of these in-progress crimes. So we've had a number of those, more than usual, so we're being vigilant about it. And actually, residents are looking out for each other and calling us. We had an incident yesterday where a resident noticed an individual that decided to just go swimming in someone's backyard. We were able to arrest that person. But, and I also encourage residents to use the vacation watch. When they're going to be away from home for more than a couple of days, you can go on the website to the Police Department page and request a vacation watch. We can either do a drive-by of your property or physically come and walk around your property and look out for your property while you're away. I recommend that more residents take advantage of that, and we'll do more to try to get the word out about that. As far as dealing with some of these issues, coming up in March, we're going to do another corridor cleanup and kind of just make our city more attractive. I know you've probably noticed some of the baskets and carts abandoned right on the outskirts, some in our city. We're going to come in and get some pickups and go pick up all of those. We continue to clean up campsites. As soon as we see them, we give the person notice, and then we're cleaning them up. We don't allow them to grow if we know about them, but those are just the things we're doing. But we have noticed, again, a pickup in some of these activities, and we are on top of it and aware of it.
What about a question about the races and the Bodies Race? Who are they primarily reaching out to when they want to hold an event? Are they going to the Police Department or is that something that they're coming?
They're contacting Danielle about the events. But this time, we're going to, we will get involved earlier. Just Saturdays just start, especially Saturday mornings, they're not good for that event.
Add two, I think, three or four?
There's been three Bodies Races and then two of the others.
The other two, but, so. Any questions for public safety? Councilor Rosengard?
I'm probably telling you something you already know. Tech Dot fenced off underneath the 290 overpass, so of course they're going to come our direction now.
Councilor Johnson?
I know this interlocal agreement with Austin Animal Services will be in the public safety meeting, but do we have an idea of if that's going to be like a cost?
No, we have no, in fact, no other city has an interlocal with them. And even if you have one, they're so limited on what they can take in right now. The types of calls that are more of a nuisance for us are like loose dogs where we can't find the owner, but we've gone out on the call and now there's this, we're kind of in a no man's land about what we do with the dog. They don't, they wouldn't get involved with those calls even if we had an interlocal with them. So, I mean, they're at full capacity right now as well, so that's kind of a quandary, but we're going to work to, at least for emergency calls, be able to have somewhere to take animals.
Okay, and so when was it that there was like three separate dogs that?
It was right in the second week of March where we had three in one day.
Right, right, so this was kind of interesting, so we were, well, the Police Department was dealing with it, and I contacted Ellen Jefferson over it just to find out like what, you know, other cities do or just like, because it seems like in the past, there's been, when there's loose dogs, like every single shelter is at capacity at all times. And so what do you do? And she pointed out this study in San Antonio, which was really interesting, and it ended up being the case, at least for us is, but the study in San Antonio was they would follow stray dogs or abandoned dogs, and at night they'd just go home. It wasn't the fact that they were abandoned or anything else like that, they just, they were just allowed to roam. Here, I think that's like less of a case, but they were dogs that, so two of them right away, it seemed like they were able to be put back with their owner, and then the third one.
The third one was able to get back reunited with the owner.
Yeah, so it's very, she said it's 95% of dogs that are just like strays or abandoned or whatever are not. They will go home if you just like kind of let them, but.
Right, that's become our protocol now while we try to find a permanent solution, which we may never, is to just follow Austin Animal Services advice and put the word out that the dog is missing, put pictures out, and hopefully the owner who's nearby will locate the animal. And actually, you know, that's worked, it worked that day, and actually, with the exception of the one that came to your house, that's worked every time. The owner has eventually found that someone had located the dog and come to retrieve the dog.
The one on Reese got adopted on Reese though, so.
Yeah, that was kind of an impromptu.
That doesn't scale, that's not a scaling solution, thank you.
Other questions for public safety? Thank you, staff. Let's move on to item number four, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. If there's any, Councilor Rosengard?
I move to approve on consent agenda item number five with correction, agenda item number six, and agenda item number seven.
Right. Motion is to approve on consent item number five with corrections, item number six and item number seven. Does anybody want to pull one of those items from the consent item list? Is there a second to approve on consent items number five, six and seven?
Second.
Councilor Young, seconds? All right, all those in favor of approving on consent, item number five, six and seven, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent item number five with corrections. Approval of the minutes from the March 26, or March 26, 2024 called meeting and work session, and I know staff has already verified those corrections. Item number six, approval of a resolution designating Public Works Department vehicles as emergency vehicles for the city. And item number seven, approval of amendments to section 9.15 Mother Friendly Workplace, 14.10 Injury Leave, and the removal of section 14.16 Voluntary Personal Leave Incentive, and 14.7 Paid Quarantine Leave for the city's Human Resources Policy Manual. All right, so council, since we're pretty ahead of schedule, what I'd like to do is jump to item number nine so that staff can discuss the recommendation and then council can decide if they want to follow the recommendation for tabling it. And then, once we get done with item number nine, we will take a break until our time certain item at seven. So it'll be a nice long break. So item number nine is Consider an Act on a Award of a Bid to Smith Contracting Company in an Amount of $525,174 for the Construction of the Oakdale Brody Waterline and Countrywide Lane Turnaround and Approval and Ordinance Amending the Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Budget for Construction of These Improvements. And hand it over to staff for their recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so we are recommending that after talking both internally and talking with the private developers who the Oakdale, which, you know, the Oakdale Brody Waterline is serving their property as well as the city's property, we are recommending tabling this item until April 16th. It is, the city has two options. We can either accept the bid or we can reject the bids and rebid the project. I can give a brief overview. When this project was put out for bid, there were actually three pieces of the project. The main project was the Countrywide Lane Turnaround. However, as we were proceeding and trying to work out an easement and the purchase of a private water line, this is not on the 6401 side, this is on the 6218 where Slab and Nomadic are. We ran into some difficulties, ran into some hurdles. So what we did is we did an addendum, I believe it was addendum number two, where we made the Oakdale Brody Waterline the main project, and then we kept at alternate two, which was the Countrywide Lane Turnaround. So the bids, the two bids that came back, they, the base bid was for the Oakdale Brody Waterline. Alternate one was for the Countrywide Lane Waterline, which we are not ready to move forward with. And then the alternate two was the Countrywide Lane Turnaround. We received two bids. The first bid was disqualified, so we have to throw that one out. So really, we just have one bid. So we are just asking to table this item while we have some more discussions surrounding various issues and then come back with 16, on the 16th for a recommendation either to accept, to award the bid to Smith or to reject all bids and rebid the project.
Council, any questions? Councilor Rosengard and then Councilor Young?
I know that we have worked with Smith Contracting before, but I'd like the idea of getting bids and knowing how they compare. That's my opinion.
Okay. Councilor Young?
Are you hoping and is it realistic to get another bid that includes the county line or the Countrywide Waterline?
I mean, that would be ideal, right? And so really, there's two options. We can keep pursuing, keep pursuing trying to, with the plans as is, which would mean purchasing that water line and getting an easement from the property. The, you know, they, the lien holders for that property and the attorney, they made us an offer for an easement that was extremely high, so the city has just made a counter offer. However, we could pursue that water line with an alternate route, so that would, the water line, then we would not need to purchase the water line from 6218 Brody. So we're looking at both, we're exploring both options. But that is a, you know, priority project for the city, is the Countrywide Lane Waterline.
If we accepted this current bid from Smith, would there be issues with later getting a bid on the Countrywide Waterline? Because that's not big enough and we need to bundle it with something else?
We've been discussing that. We've been discussing some options for bundling it with another project, but we would have to see where we are at that time.
Councilor Rosengard?
Would we be able to get the bids by April 16th? No? So the delay would affect the developer?
Yeah, so if we, if council has, on April 16th, we can't go out and get, we can't get more bids between now and then, council would either have to award the bid or reject all bids at that point in time, and then we would rebid the project at some point.
At that time, April 16th, not tonight?
Not tonight.
The April 16th is not outside the window for accepting the bids for the current RP or proposals. However, if council at that time or staff makes a recommendation, council falls it to reject all bids, it would start the proposal process again or the solicitation process again. And so we'd be looking at another six weeks before we'd probably come back and award bids. So that's just a timeframe to keep in mind. And so we can't reject the bids until council takes action. So council, do we, we can either follow through with more questions? Council obviously can take action on this, or we can table it until the next meeting, which is staff's recommendation. Councilor Rosengard?
I move to table agenda item number nine.
All right, so the motion is to table agenda item number nine until April 16th?
To April 16th.
Okay, as recommended by staff. Any second for that? Councilor Burrell, second? Further discussion on this item or this motion? All those in favor of tabling item number nine until April 16th, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. So that item will come back on our next agenda and we'll have an update from staff on their recommendation for proceeding. All right, so council, we're going to go ahead and take a break until our time certain item, which is our last agenda item, but it's a important one. It's a presentation on the Reimagine Brody Project, and we will begin at 7:00 with that item. And so at this time, we're taking a break at 5:35 and we'll bring back, we'll start again at 7:00.
Counsel, are we good to go? All right. All right. We are resuming our council meeting at 7:01 PM for our last agenda, which is number eight, presentation discussion of the Reimagine Brody Project Design Implementation Plan and Probable Costs by Mend Collaborative. And before I hand it over to Mend, I want to say thank you to all the people that have provided input into this project. I know that a lot of it was solicited starting, you know, months ago in terms of the outreach to the public. A few of us went on that walk also just to see the conditions at night and some of the lighting issues there, but also know that we've had a robust public engagement process, which if you had a chance to look through the backup, you saw some of the results of the surveys. And we'll go through the presentation by Mend. One note is that while there are probable costs that will be going over, I want to emphasize that, you know, this is not, we're not taking any action on any of these things tonight. We're giving, council's giving their feedback so that we can start refining the next steps in the, in the process and the plan, including any direction that council wants to take for possible, you know, recommendations. So with that, I'll hand it over to staff and to Mend for the presentation.
All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for having me here tonight. And I'm also joined by, by Tom Turk from Freeland Turk, who will be presenting a little bit on his scope of civil engineering and safety improvements tonight. We're going to get the presentation going. I can put that, let's see. If you go the bottom right, there's like a little picture of a piece of paper. There we go. Okay. Thank you. It is. Can everyone hear me? Okay. So my name is Carrie Spiegelhalter. I'm a partner at Mend Collaborative. We're a landscape architecture, urban, urban planning firm, urban design firm based in Austin, and we have been working these past five months along with Arup, a lighting specialist, Dovetail Studio, who provided urban design support, and Freeland Turk, our civil engineer on this project. And tonight we'll be talking to you about everything that we have envisioned for, for Brody Lane. So just to kind of touch base on what exactly the scope of this project is, this is an aerial image of Brody Lane, and this actually just goes to Ben Garza, but later in this project, we moved kind of the boundary down to Allegra Lugar, but this kind of gives you a little bit of an overview of what is currently at Brody Lane. So we have retail kind of to the north, just south of 290, and as you go farther along the corridor, there's more trail connections, and then eventually it gets to some, some commercial and neighborhoods at the end of the corridor there. And really what we're showing here is kind of at the beginning, at the north side of, I'm just going to shift this a little bit. At the north side of Brody Lane, we have the entry and connection path to the future of the Violet Crown Trail, which is a regional trail system that will go throughout Austin and Travis County, and will come down along Brody and then turn at Home Depot Boulevard to connect to another trailhead and then eventually connect outside of Sunset Valley to a larger trail system. So that's kind of the context of what we're looking at for Brody Lane. And we were brought on by the city to help set forth a vision for Brody Lane as a vibrant, safe, and attractive corridor to, to help make this connection to the Violet Crown Trail that will be coming through Brody Lane, and to really use this as an opportunity to highlight businesses and restaurants and other economic generators for the city as, as part of this opportunity. So we worked with the city, we worked with community members, representatives from the commercial shopping centers, and the city of Austin, Travis County, more on logistics to help, how, to think about how we could get this done, and other stakeholders to make sure we're kind of representing of community and stakeholder voices in this, in this process. And we started in October of 2023, and we wrapped up our design and kind of implementation plan work just, just at the end of this March. And as, as the mayor noted, are, are bringing this plan to you for your comment, questions, review, and then to think about next steps as we look towards the future of Brody Lane. Next, please. So we started out in October. I'm just going to quickly go over some of the steps that we took as part of this process, specifically what we did for community engagement. In October, we opened up our first survey that was online, and that survey also had a virtual map component where we invited people to tell us how they currently interact with Brody Lane. Are they walking on it, biking on it, driving on it? How does that feel? Is it, is it, does it feel safe? Why are you on Brody Lane? Do you live off Brody Lane? Are you shopping? Are you eating off of Brody Lane? What does that look like? Kind of to get a baseline for what it's like. And then we also paired that with a site walk to get some existing conditions, and we did a site walk with community members to get an understanding of how, how is Brody Lane feel at night? There's not a lot of lighting right now, which was identified at, by the community as a big problem. So we took people out on a walk to really experience how dark it can be and to kind of think about where key moments for lighting would be. This, this kind of came in the end of October. We had a public presentation where we did that night walk, and then this got all wrapped up in what we call a case for action report, which was a document that summarized the results of that community engagement and kind of set the stage for our future recommendations by saying, hey, this is why we need to take action and do a redesign of Brody Lane. And then we spent most of December and early January drafting up a concept for Brody Lane and the corridor area, and then we presented that to the public at the end of January and got feedback from, from that, on that concept. And we had a survey also open at that time, and we got feedback on that concept. We also asked people, what kind of art would you like to see? What kind of, what's the style of what, what feels authentically Sunset Valley for what we're going to have along Brody Lane? So then we were able to use that in the recommendations and ideas that we're putting together for things like art, branding, wayfinding, lighting, et cetera. And now we have a concept design that was fine tuned with the community, and we were able to put together a phasing plan that has an opinion of probable construction cost that sets forth a several year long vision for what this could be. And so we're, we're here with you tonight to kind of present that final vision and to get your direction and feedback. And I'm just going to summarize a little bit of the case for action, things that we learned as part of that first phase of the design, where we were talking to community members, going out on site and doing our evaluations. So the major challenges that Brody has is that there, the, the intersections feel dangerous. There's not a lot of lighting at night. In fact, some areas are inadequately lit while others are overly lit. Kind of lax wayfinding signage to retail, to restaurants, to other amenities within Sunset Valley, such as the really beautiful trail system that you all have. There's inadequate pedestrian access into shopping centers, not enough shade, tree canopy or landscape, but really the most obvious and painful issues are how narrow the sidewalks are and that they're too close to the roads, oftentimes right up against it, usually like a five foot or a six foot sidewalk, which is kind of inadequate and also, you know, not enough for, certainly not bikes who would be on the road if they felt safe doing so. And so riding your bike and biking along Brody is, feels dangerous and not a lot of people do it, frankly. And so that first round of community engagement was held from October to November. As I said, we had a survey and a map. We had 115 people participate, and the interactive map received 69 posts by 20 people. We also hosted a lighting workshop with our subconsultant, Arup. We got a lot of ideas from that. We did our night walk. They also performed a nighttime vulnerability assessment where they went out at night and used equipment to measure the amount of darkness and the areas of light that are present along Brody Lane. And that's really interesting, as I mentioned, some areas are overly lit, some areas are underlit. So sometimes when you're in a very bright area, that can actually disturb and mess up your eyesight so that when you're in, then when you enter a less lit area, you're less likely to be able to see. So trying to think about where those issues are and how we can evenly spread that lighting. So lighting objectives became thinking about how lighting could enhance the identity of Sunset Valley, the safety of the corridor, keeping in mind the environment and that Sunset Valley is a dark skies, dark skies community, that we're not going to have any uplighting as part of this, and thinking about how we can define spaces along the And these are some of the results of the survey that we had. We asked people, how would you rank your experience walking on Brody? Forty-two percent of respondents said they had an unpleasant or very unpleasant experience walking on Brody Lane. We asked them how they would rank their experience biking on Brody. Thirty-four percent of respondents said they had an unpleasant or very unpleasant experience biking on Brody Lane. But what's interesting about this information is that 50% of respondents weren't even able to answer that question because they say, I don't bike on Brody Lane. It's simply too dangerous. And we asked them about driving, and 60% of respondents say they have a neutral experience driving on Brody Lane. So that's, you know, pretty about average for any sort of thorough fare like that. This is, driving doesn't seem to be the main pain point that we're seeing. So just thinking about who participated and why are they on Brody? Thirty-five percent of participants of the survey live and work in Sunset Valley. Twenty-six percent live in Sunset Valley and work elsewhere, but they visit Sun, and they are in Sunset Valley often. Twenty-one percent live in Sunset Valley and work elsewhere, and 9.6% work in Sunset Valley and live elsewhere. And that was important to us to ask because we know a lot of people work, who work in Sunset Valley, work for the shopping centers. They might be a, in retail. And so we wanted to get a sense for how people who are coming to work in those stores and restaurants, you know, what's their experience like when they, when they have to get to We asked people, we gave them 12 options for what their most desirable improvements would be for, for Brody Lane, and we heard shade, vehicular safety and flow improvements, pedestrian safety improvements, followed by landscaping and lighting. And we asked them, we kind of gave several examples of goals for what Brody Lane could, could look to, towards achieving. And the first one that the, the people were most in favor for was thinking about, Brody Lane is a key connection for the future Violet Crown Trail, prioritizing safety and comfort for pedestrians and bicyclists. The next one prioritized aesthetic improvements like public art, shade, and landscaping. The third was kind of keeping economic development thriving and helping businesses thrive. And the final, and the last that we had was as an important quarter for commuters, Brody Lane improvements should prioritize improving vehicular flow traffic. So we're really seeing, thinking about pedestrian improvements, bicyclist improvements, and that future trail connection is coming to the forefront. And additionally, aesthetic improvements like art, shade, and landscaping. But all of that is to say that these things help to achieve the economic growth and development and thriving of Sunset Valley's businesses if it gets people to the corridor, walking and biking, and feeling like this is a place that they, they can be and kind of stop in places to shop and eat. So we put together six main project goals for this project based on what we heard from community members and the results of our analysis. The first one, and this is not in any particular order, just to say, complete, create a complete and safe street that balances the needs of vehicular, bicycle, pedestrian, and Violet Crown Trail users. Establish a sense of place along Brody Lane as it passes through Sunset Valley through public art, landscape, and other aesthetic improvements. Invigorate the commercial district to help Sunset Valley's businesses thrive and ensure the continued economic vitality of the corridor. Highlight connections to the city's trails and parks, retailers, restaurants, and other destinations through a wayfinding and signage program. Incorporate lighting that enhances safety and the attractiveness of the corridor while minimizing light pollution. And finally, adding more trees to provide shade and a cooling effect along the corridor in addition to green, green stormwater infrastructure. So now we can get a little bit into our concept design. So this is kind of a, a graphic that just paints a really big picture of how we're thinking about three major sections of the corridor here. So going kind of north to south, with north being on the right side of the screen, both screens, we're thinking about the area from 290 to about Home Depot is really about investing in pathways and in kind of investments in landscaping and creating a welcoming atmosphere with lighting, gateway art, wayfinding, and path improvements that connect people to retail and restaurants, and then also to the Violet Crown Trail that's off of Home Depot. So this is kind of like the first tier of, in, of the corridor that is receiving the most investment in terms of amenities like lighting and landscape and art. And then the area basically from Home Depot to 6200 Brody, which is just past Indian Grass Preserve, is really focusing on just a more simple path that connects community members to trails and neighborhoods. There's a bunch of trailheads in that area, so we're thinking about how we can connect people there. And then finally, that last section, the neighborhood connector, connects, kind of connects neighborhoods to the corridor. There's a big apartment complex just past Allegra Lugar, so we want to be able to get people from there and other community members living at that end of Brody Lane up safely to shopping and other experiences along Brody and hiking and things like that. So the first thing that we wanted to think about as, as part of this set of investments is the path and, and what that looks like, and how we're going to make that connection from the Violet Crown Trail, trailhead, which is just north of 290, to the Violet Crown Trailhead at Home Depot, at the end of Home Depot Boulevard. So in order to kind of think about safety and think about usage of bicyclists and pedestrians, what we're proposing is actually separating where we can, where the right of way allows for it, and we have for the space, separating bicyclists and pedestrians in what's called a separated facility. And so we have a six foot path and about a, kind of where it's possible, 10 to 12 foot two-way bike lane that would be separated by either landscaping or art or some, some other amenity. And in some places, it could even look like a small gathering space with landscaping and things like that. So you'll see that up on, up on the screen there. So where, where we are doing that, and it's possible, we have that condition, but where the right of way is a little bit more constrained, we're proposing what we're calling a high use. the right-of-way is a little bit more constrained, we're proposing what we're calling a high-use combined facility, where we have bicyclists, a two-way bike lane, and a pedestrian pathway, but they, they're not separated by anything between them. They simply have striping and potentially color that separates the two uses. So, we're kind of keeping things separate between bikes, bicyclists and pedestrians, and that is important because people who might be using the Violet Crown Trail might be traveling at higher speeds if they're biking. It just kind of is a, is a safety enhancement. And then, as you kind of move out of that retail and restaurant connector, north area, where there'll probably be a little bit less foot, bicyclist traffic because people might have already turned to get onto the Violet Crown Trail at Home Depot, we are proposing a just single 12-foot wide, what we're calling a low-use combined facility that doesn't have striping to differentiate bicyclists and pedestrians. It's kind of like what you would imagine the hike and bike trail at Lady Bird Lake being. So, it kind of mixes the two together. And then, actually, if you could go back really quickly, just one other condition along, along Brody Lane that we're thinking about is at the bridge that goes over Williamson Creek, actually, on the east side, the land there is owned by the city. So, bringing the path to be off of the bridge and into the nature, Sunset Valley nature area as a 12-foot path that would kind of bring people off the bridge because we're not really able to expand the width of the, of the path there because it's pretty constrained due to the bridge. So, getting people off and then reconnecting after the bridge. And then, the west side is also going to see improvements as well, not as dramatic as the east side. Right now, similar to the east side, it's simply a, simply a five or six-foot path that is right up against the road. So, we're proposing where it's possible, where the grade changes allow, to bring it back from right, being right up against the road into the right-of-way, adding landscaping as a buffer to the road, trees where we can do that. And then, actually, past Home Depot Boulevard, having it be where we have a little bit more right-of-way, that 12-foot low-use combined facility. And the, the idea there is that people might be biking up south from Brody Lane to get to the Violet Crown Trail head, so that should be a little bit thicker so people can come up on their bikes and then make that turn on Home Depot. These are some examples of, of how we could configure the combined facilities. I think most likely, it will look like something like this right here, which is just separated by colored concrete. It's the least expensive option when you're thinking about how to differentiate between paths that are, you know, right next to each other. But there are other options, like adding materials, like pavers or things like that. And then, of course, symbology can be added on top of the concrete as well, and that just helps people know, "Oh, this is where I should be." So, that's, it'll probably be a combination of the colored concrete with the symbols on them as well. And then, in terms of the separated facilities, I think the most likely and most attractive thing to put in between the bike lane and the, the bike path and the pedestrian path would be landscaping, trees where we can do it, art if we can, and then, in some places, there's actually enough room for us to put a couple benches in between, which, which would be nice as well, and we have an image of what that could look like. So, this is just kind of an artistic rendering of what this path could look like. You'll see the bike path has a colored concrete to it, and then, this is in a, in a place kind of close by that intersection with Home Depot on the east side, just north of that. There's a little bit of room between the two paths where you could put some shaded seating, and then adding the pedestrian path closer to retail to make it easier for people to make that connection into the shopping centers. And then, just, just also showing possibilities of what art could look like, what wayfinding could look like. These are just examples of what these could be, certainly not decided upon at this point. And then, kind of zooming in on each part of the corridor, we're going to kind of walk you down Brody Lane here. From 290 to Upper Cougar Creek, you'll see... Okay. Well, just north, northwest of, northeast of 290 is where the Violet Crown Trail is. So, thinking about how we can make that connection, that's that, that kind of dark blue, purple line here. Thanks Carolyn for doing that. And then have it cross under 290. We're proposing some improvements underneath 290 that could look like terracing some of the concrete that's there now and adding landscaping. We could also add murals or other, probably just murals to underneath 290. This, this image that we're showing here came from the plan that Canales and Company did. Also adding lighting underneath 290, and this could be, it might not be able to be colorful, but we could add some interesting kind of shapes to the lighting as part of that. And then, once you cross under 290, the path will actually, on the east side, separate to become that, that, that dual separated path where you have that purple path closer to the road is the bike path, the red path set back from the road is the pedestrian path. And then, we could have benches, landscaping, lighting in between those two. Another thing I wanted to touch on, and this is a theme that goes throughout the corridor, is lighting. And where we're adding lighting is specifically bollard lighting at intersections. I think I, I don't have a picture of what that could look like in this image, but I do in some of the next ones. So, making sure at key moments of, of crossing the street, pedestrians are lit and they're able to be seen by, by vehicles. And then, some more like fun kind of placemaking lighting would be some tree lighting that we could put in some of the really beautiful live oak trees that are already along Brody. So, you'll see the image of that right there. And then, the red kind of star images that we have in the median are art opportunities. There's, there's opportunities to kind of brand what it looks like. You know, when you're entering Sunset Valley, this is really a gateway. And so, how do we think about highlighting, highlighting and Sunset Valley as a welcoming place for people and making sure people know, "Hey, I'm in Sunset Valley. I've left the city of Austin. This is, this is a different and special place." And then, another improvement that we have at this location are some intersection improvements to kind of assist with vehicular flow at this intersection that the city has had a couple of issues with. So, I'm going to hand it off to Tom to talk a little bit about those improvements.
Thank you, Carrie. As Carrie mentioned, one of the things that we heard loud and clear from the surveys that we took was that people wanted to improve the safety and the flow of Brody Lane itself. And one of the things that we learned from Chief Carter first was that the right-hand turn from the frontage road of 290 to Brody was a number one accident location in the city. And we got plenty of comments in the survey to, to back that up. And as you all know, I'm sure you've tried to make that turn, but, you know, there's a, there's a slight skew in the geometry of the intersection there, and, and when you pull up to that yield sign, you really have to look very hard to your left, and it's a very strained look. So, it's, it's hard to see the, the traffic that's coming at you, and it's very, very difficult at times to merge into that lane with the oncoming traffic safely. So, what we are proposing is basically a right-hand turn lane that starts on the frontage road of 290, and we'd have a full turning lane all the way through Brody, actually between the two Wendy's driveways. And, and what this does is it gives a driver the time and the distance to safely view the traffic that is coming and to safely merge into the traffic with the, with the oncoming cars from the north. We also got lots of comments about comfortably and safely going through this intersection as a pedestrian and as a bicyclist. So, what we are proposing at this location as well is a, a raised crosswalk. Anytime you raise a crosswalk or an intersection, what you're doing is you're calming the traffic, you're, you're slowing people down. And slowing people down is kind of central to improving safety. Slowing people that, down increases the time in which people can react to things, both the driver and a pedestrian or, or a bicyclist. If there is an incident, the slower a car moves, the less severity of that incident. So, slowing speeds is a good thing to do across, across the board. And of course, that intersection will have plenty of advanced warnings and markings. We can even consider putting a yield sign to the pedestrian or the bicyclist as they attempt to cross. So, the, the improvements that we have shown there will increase the safety of that particular location quite a bit. We're also talking about putting in lighting, which will really help things at night. The traffic signal upgrades, we plan to coordinate with the Tech Dot, will actually detect a pedestrian and a bicyclist, incorporate that into the timing of the signal, and get them to pass through the intersection safely and, and more quickly. Right now, to get through the intersection, you know, you just hit the button and wait. The, the actual detection of the pedestrian and the bicyclist will really help the, the efficiency and the safety of, of the flow going through that intersection.
Great. The next section is Upper Cougar Creek to Academy. And the, the theme of the lighting being at the intersections to, to light the pedestrians as they're crossing is kind of the same here. You'll see an image of the bollard lighting, and that one is actually selected as a, as a preferred option as part of our second survey when we asked people what kind of like aesthetics they were interested in as part of this plan. We also have wayfinding that we're showing here on the east side of the path here to kind of connect people to the Upper Cougar Creek Trail that, that's at that location. And then, similarly, we also have art in the medians, and then, there are also some improvements being made at Home Depot. Oh, I'm sorry, this is ERW, so Tom can talk through those, that as well.
So, in the surveys, and when we talk to folks, here's what we learned about the intersection that people were concerned about. First of all, there appeared to be a lot of congestion at the northbound approach as they, people tried to turn left on the ERW. The sidewalks on the west side of the intersection are very narrow, right up against the curb, and they're very steep as they try to, try to enter into the shopping center there, and they're not really ADA compatible. We heard from people that cars were just going through the intersection too fast. So, we took that input and we were recommending the following things. One, we would simply add an additional left-turn lane, so we would have dual lefts from Brody to ERW. We would fundamentally shift the whole intersection to the east, about a lane width, maybe 10, 12 feet. And what that does is it gives us more room to work with on that eastbound approach or on the west side going into the shopping center there. It allows us to put in wider sidewalks. It allows us to get those sidewalks away from the curb line, and it gives us the space and the room we need to take out some of that grade and make that ADA accessible and to meet current standards. We're also going to upgrade the traffic signals. The signals are about 20 or 30 years old, and they'll be set up so that they can detect pedestrians and bicyclists, just like at, at 290, which will help them move safely and more efficiently through the intersection along with the traffic. We're also going to raise that intersection about six inches as a traffic calming strategy. We want people to slow down a little bit. We're also going to bring in the, the bollard lighting at night, so, so the intersection is more safe and it's more comfortable for people to traverse through it.
Okay. And then, the, the next section is Academy to Williamson Creek. One piece that I haven't mentioned that is kind of scattered throughout this plan is the green infrastructure. So, you'll see an image, the upper right corner in green here is a bioswale. So, what this would do is capture the stormwater coming off of the road and kind of help infiltrate it to protect water quality and filter pollutants. And so, that's kind of, that is a strategy that's integrated at most intersections throughout Brody Lane. And then, at these intersections, we're also hoping to do a little bit more kind of placemaking and artistic intervention, so adding crosswalks that could be painted, various colors, working with an artist to make them more fun and inviting, and, and to draw attention to them so that when, when people and vehicles approach the intersection, the colorful intersections are more likely to kind of slow people down, to see them, to note that this is a, a place where people will be crossing. We also have wayfinding at this location at Home Depot Boulevard to kind of draw people to the Violet Crown Trail connection, and then also could make connections to various places within the shopping centers. And then, as you kind of continue south on Brody, if you're, you know, going left on the screen here, this is where after, after Love Grass Lane, that the path will start to deviate away from the road and actually go into the Sunset Valley nature area, and to be that path, that would be, at this point, just a 12-foot, the low-use combined path that would be lit by pole lighting in this location so that people would feel safe to use that path that would be off the road and in the nature area. And this would get people off the road and kind of, if they're biking, into, into a more, a space that's, that have a little bit more room. But alternatively, the, the path would still connect to the bridge itself if people wanted to take that route instead. And just a couple improvements at Home Depot.
Sure. So, we're doing, we're, we're suggesting many of the same improvements that we talked about at ERW. We're talking about traffic signal improvements that will move pedestrians and bicyclists through the intersection more efficiently. This is kind of an important one for the Violet Crown Trail because people are actually turning right to maintain their, their pace and path on, on the trail that goes down Home Depot Boulevard and then, and then ties into the section of the Violet Crown Trail that just got constructed. And as you may be aware, on the west side of the intersection, the improvements to the radius returns and the sidewalks are currently under design with our Home Depot Boulevard project, and we're designing them to connect to the things we might want to do on Brody at this location. We're raising the intersection to slow people down, and obviously, the bollards will, will help light at night and, and direct people to remain on the Violet Crown Trail.
And this is just kind of a bird's eye perspective of what that could look like with all those improvements, just to help you visualize what that raised intersection would look like. It's very slight, just about six inches, but that's enough for, for vehicles to slow down as they're, as they're making this crossing. And then, and then you'll see what that path approach could look like from the separated bicyclist and pedestrian path as it gets to the intersections, and as you can make that turn to connect to the Violet Crown Trail connection. And then, this next section is Williamson Creek to Oakdale. At this location, we have the path coming back to connect to, around the east side, the path, that's a shared-use path still at this point and will be for the rest of the corridor. Comes back from the city-owned property and reconnects with the road. It's still a little bit set back from the road, but at this point, just... But at this point, just thinking about investments in things like landscaping, things like art. It's a little bit less in this area since it's not kind of that higher traffic, more north retail area. So this becomes a little bit more straightforward in terms of it just being pathway improvements for pedestrians and bicyclists. And then on the west side, once the shared use path, that 12-foot path actually hits Indian Grass Preserve, it will actually terminate and become just kind of a pedestrian path that will connect to the existing path. And a part of this was because there's a piece of stormwater infrastructure that is kind of blocking that path. And so it becomes quite expensive and difficult to kind of go over that, to continue that path at that location. But we are providing the path on the east side for people who want to be coming up Brody on that side. And then finally, on the east side, that shared use path will connect all the way to Allegro Lugar. And the idea for that is it's that edge of the city of Sunset Valley's property. And it connects to an apartment complex and neighborhoods that will, you know, will be able to bring people up Brody on that shared use path to get them to everything that Sunset Valley has to offer. This is just a very big overview of our second public survey. It was really mostly focused on getting feedback on the improvements. I will say, most people were in agreement that this is a good idea to do. We had 38% of people strongly agree, 34% of people agree. And a very limited amount of people who were kind of below that in their thoughts on this plan. Other than that, we asked about visual identity and what kind of art they'd like to see. It was kind of interesting, people really liked what we were calling Rustic Texas as the vibe of Sunset Valley and Brody Lane. This is a lot of like Corten steel, a lot of limestone, a lot of natural materials. Kind of aligns with how you guys are already doing things. So that was kind of an interesting thing to find out. Okay, and as the last part of this project, we kind of broke down that entire corridor into different project phases, working with staff on what this could look like. So we have three kind of main phases here that are separated geographically. The first of which is 290 to Home Depot Boulevard. The second phase is Home Depot Boulevard to 6200 Brody. That's basically Indian Grass Preserve, if you're thinking about it that way. And then 6200 Brody to Allegro Lugar, which is where the path becomes just a shared use path on the east side. And then we have sub-phases as part of that. So this first phase, that kind of is spread geographically from 290 to Home Depot, would take about four to five years to complete and would total at about 14.4 million. But we've broken it down to additional sub-phases. And I kind of want everyone to think about this in terms of, you know, it's a long-term project and can be spaced out in even more time than this. And we can talk even more about how this could be phased. And we want the council's feedback on this phasing plan and what your thoughts are on this. So Phase 1A, you could go to the next slide. Phase 1A would be the first year or so. And this was selected due to the fact that the Violet Crown Trail is basically complete at both ends. At Home Depot Boulevard and at the northwest trailhead, the trailhead northwest of 290. So right now, there is this gap here that we're seeing in Sunset Valley along Brody. And so this would kind of be the first step that the city could take to complete this gap and to fill this in. This section would be just the path on the east side from 290, just south of 290, to Home Depot Boulevard. And that includes not only the path, but all the art, landscape, amenities, wayfinding, tree planting, et cetera. And the other nice thing about this plant, this phase, is it would have a minimal impact to traffic as a result of its construction. The next phase that we would consider for this project is what we're calling Phase 1B. That is the intersection improvements at 290 and Brody that Tom mentioned. That would be the right turn lane, the merge lane, et cetera. So things that would help with traffic safety at that location. It also includes the ERW intersection improvements. And it includes the west side pedestrian path improvements from 290 to Home Depot Boulevard. And so that would be probably Phase 2, years two or three, and that would be about 4.3. And then the Phase 1C would be everything that's kind of happening underneath Brody. Sorry, underneath 290, which would be to remove the concrete that's there and replace it with landscaping. And then make that final connection to the trailhead north of 290. And this would be about 3.2 million. And then Phase 1D, which would be years four to five-ish, would be intersection improvements at Home Depot Boulevard. But this also includes mill and overlay for the entire road from Home Depot Boulevard to 290. So keep that in mind as well, that is also included in this section. And so that's everything in Phase 1. Phase 2 and 3 is a little bit more simple, so I've kind of just put it on this slide. Phase 2A would be the east side shared use path from Home Depot to 6200 Brody. Phase 2B would be the west side shared use path from Home Depot to 6200 Brody. And then 3A would complete the path on the east side all the way down to Allegro Lugar. So all in all, kind of, all the numbers together, it adds up to about 19 million. And, but keep in mind, I know that's a very large number. You know, this is a phased project that could be eight, 10 years in the making for the entire thing. We can also talk about, you know, what are the priorities for this? What could potentially be changed or removed, thinking about, you know, these different sub-phases. So I think what we're looking for from y'all at this point is your feedback, questions, and direction. If you could go to actually the final slide. Our thoughts at this point, you know, working with staff on this, would be, Phase 1A would be a nice next step to make in terms of completing that bike and pedestrian path from 290 to Home Depot on the east side. That would connect to the Violet Trail connection. And that includes elements that support the place making and kind of feel and welcoming atmosphere of Sunset Valley, like the art, lighting, landscaping, wayfinding, and branding. And as I said before, it would have little disturbance to the traffic. So that's something that we see as a next step and we're kind of looking to you all for direction on that.
Thank you very much. Just really briefly, thank you for all the work that went into the putting together of this plan or this conceptual plan. It is something that, you know, I think the city's interests and my interests are improving the safety of that corridor, especially for pedestrian and vehicular traffic. You know, I had personal experience with that right turn lane at 290 and Brody getting into an accident because a car wasn't looking, you know, appropriately. And they, you know, they had to stop suddenly because there's another car coming. So, you know, they backed right into me. So, and just so, those intersections are just, you know, they're not very pedestrian friendly at all. And I would love it if we had a way of allowing for a corridor that connected both sides of Brody and made it did it in a safe way. I really also just am encouraged by making this more vibrant and colorful and identifying space for the city. A lot of the concepts in here are, you know, just attractive from a, you know, a wishful sort of like, this would be, you know, wonderful, you know, to have, just as a high concept. And so I appreciate the feedback that we got from the community with regards to this. I will emphasize that, you know, this is a start to this process. You know, obviously, we completed this first phase of coming up with a design plan. You know, this is something, our conceptual plan. These are not things that we've made decisions on. However, the next step for council is to decide, where do we go from here? You know, this is certainly something that if we decided to invest here, you know, we'd want to talk about where are our priorities? Where would the funding potentially come from for those priorities? A lot of this is actually eligible for the street fund, which is a nice, you know, robust fund right now for the city. But of course, it doesn't match or meet the current estimated cost. But the phasing of this or the spreading out of the multiple years is something that, like you said, the city could consider to essentially amortize that cost over a period of time. And these are also just estimates of probable costs based on, you know, this design, right? So those are going to change as we get feedback and potentially narrow in on where the council and the city desires to go with this. But like I said, overall, I mean, I love this idea, right? In terms of whatever goals are making this more vibrant, safe corridor. And just, you know, what is cities' priorities as far as going forward in the next steps. And so with that, I'll open it up for council members to provide their feedback, especially with regards to, you know, what they've seen in the plan, but also where they envision this going next from their perspective and getting feedback from other sources within the city. And so whoever wants to start? We've got Councilmember Rosengard and then Councilmember Young.
On the separated facilities, you need a lot of land. Do we have that much right of way or do we have to now buy land from the retailers?
We would be looking at and trying to get easements from them. And I believe when, a few years back, when we did the right turn lane from Brody off onto ERW, going north on Brody Lane. I believe we worked with the shopping center at that time to relocate part of the sidewalk to make that lane possible. So I know we've had luck working with them in the past. And I know we're working with them on some other easements and stuff right now and within the shopping centers to help, you know, improve connectivity and things around those areas. And they seem very amenable to that, those things, anything that improves that connection.
A lot of them, the separated paths are actually in the right of way. There's a very large right of way on the east side. So I think the easements that we would need would be pretty minimal. Because a lot of it fits within the right of way where there's oftentimes up to 40 feet.
Because you need 27 feet from what we already have.
Councilmember Young or Mayor Verter.
I want to thank men for all the hard work they did on this and putting everything together, taking all the feedback from everyone, putting it all together and putting it out here. But I think we need to take a step back here. It's great to have everything in the plan. One of the things I liked about the Parks and Open Space Plan, for example, was it gave us kind of a smorgasbord of things to do. We may never and probably will never do all those things. But we've got a nice set of things we can choose from. In this case, I think this is a little too much. And I think we need to go back and go over these things and say, what is really worthwhile? What is really valuable? What is cost-effective here? And I think we've, I think we skipped a step in the process. I think that this plan, even before it came to council, should have gone through committees, gone through planning and environmental, gone through public works, and gotten their feedback. And I think that feedback would have been valuable and that they would have said, this is viable and worthwhile, maybe this isn't. And I'll give you a concrete example of that. Our engineers had proposed at one point, doing a lot of work on Home Depot Boulevard. And basically, at one point even saying, we're going to close it and redo this. And on public works, we have a bunch of very experienced engineers. And they looked at it and said, why do we need to do this? You know, for a cost of, I forget the exact amount, but I believe it was in the millions of dollars. And they went out and looked at it, talked about it, and said, we don't need to do this. We can cut way back on this and save ourselves a considerable amount of money. And that's money that can be used for other projects. And that's the value of having committees weigh in on this, right? We have people with lots of expertise, we have people who've been in the community a long time. We have people who can give that kind of feedback. And I think that would be really valuable here, to get that kind of feedback and say, what's viable here? What's worthwhile here? What's really going to pay off for us in the long run? Because I think there's a lot of great ideas in here, but I think there's too much here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
This is an overwhelming document, but then, you know, I kind of caught my breath and started going through it. And there's a lot of really cool stuff, kind of like the Parks and Open Space, though. It is like, I kind of saw it as just like a, you know, buffet where you're going down and you're kind of choosing the things that you want. The, the things that, I kind of set myself like a little priority list of things I wanted. And we kind of saw like what the survey respondents wanted as well. And so like, safety was always like some of the top ones. I tell them real big on that. So my, now, I'm thinking about shutting down the Home Depot Boulevard intersection. But those intersections, the two more major ones at Home Depot Boulevard and Ernest Robles, and I guess down at 290 as well, are kind of like a disaster. And I think something needs to be done. I can't believe that there aren't more accidents at them. And that's just when you're in a car, but when you're trying to cross or either walking or on a bike. So the idea of raised intersections there, like, I really like. But that, that has to be expensive, right? Or maybe not? Okay. Yeah, I guess that would be. But, and it does act as a traffic calming. My idea, the 16-year-old version of me sees that as a challenge to get there. But like, for the most part, people just slow down, right? And just get on with it. The, one of the things I was hoping to see here that didn't make it in is Market Fair, unless you're in a car, there is no way to get into that shopping center without walking or biking on the road. And I know you tried to probably work within the bounds of either property that we already have or things that we can get right away or easements. But I wish we could just get Market Fair to put sidewalks in at least one side at every intersection. Because it's just, you know, going over to Bougie's Donuts from where we live over here. And everything's fine until you get on the other side of Brody. And then it's just like, super dangerous. And I got three little girls that go with me. So that's one thing where, I don't know, if there could be outreach to them to just show the bigger picture of what we're doing and what we're trying to, how we're trying to make it a little bit safer and see if there's any appetite for that. I took a bunch of notes while you were talking, so I'm only going to, just the ones with stars I'm going to bring up here. Does, the width of these paths, I know I said like, I want sidewalk, I want walking trails and I want biking. But then I'm going to complain about the amount of impervious cover. How, what, how much would that be to take, you know, a half mile of 17 feet of sidewalk? And then, so is that just a rounding error? Am I thinking it's a bigger deal than it really is?
Well, and I think if you think of what is going to be on that, that's, it's a pedestrian path.
Yeah.
It's a bicycle path. So you're not going to have all of this stuff that you get from cars running off of that generally. So to, yes, you have impervious cover that can increase velocity runoff. But what's usually running off of that is not as bad as what comes off of roads and streets and stuff like that.
The sidewalk isn't great, but there is something nice about being on the east side of Brody. And it's just kind of like green and just paving it over. It will be a nicer place to walk, but, you know, we're losing a little bit of that vegetative buffer there. The bridge, or the underpass under the Brody Bridge, I'm a big fan of that. There's, because currently, there's, down there, there's no easy way. And I'm a big dude, but when I'm- And I'm a big dude, but when I'm running in the morning, sometimes I want to go over to Indian Grass and I just don't. And like, that is like one of the sketchiest little areas. And so I just never run over there. So I was a big fan of that. I was a little, the, the, the trail pole lights, how tall are, are those for when you kind of get off of Brody and kind of go down into the Williamson Creek kind of area?
Probably about 12 to 15 feet. Eric found those, so I can't say for certain what they are.
Yeah. It, it would be nice if we were at this point in like the process, but it, I, those things would probably be like a pass for me because it's like, you get out there and you're like in nature and it's dark and it's kind of nice. And also the, the lights in the trees as well. I love the trees and we want kind of better lighting, but I, I think it's just like, you know, mixing the, the lights with the trees is kind of like, throws me off. And that's the thought about Dakota up on a 14-foot A-frame ladder, trying to replace those, those lights up there. I have more notes, but I'll let someone else go.
Councilmember Bura?
I have a, I have a question and, and a comment. The artwork is included in the opinion for cost estimate, is that in the site furnishings?
It's kind of as an allowance. Oh, yeah. Yes, I mean, it's not included in the site furnishings, but it's kind of included in that kind of amenities and art wayfinding kind of together.
So is it's included or it's not included?
Oh, the, the public art, yes, it is included.
Artwork is included?
It is, yeah. I thought you were asking if it was included in furnishings, which it, it's its own category is what I'm trying to say.
Because I didn't see it, I guess, when I was looking. You're saying it's a son category in the estimate? I'm looking, I'm looking at it now and don't see it.
It, I think, oh, maybe it did get put in with, let's see here.
Yeah, so the, the only document council received had the, just the summary page of the first tab. I think it's in site, I believe it is in site.
It's in site furnishings, okay. I understand your question now. Thank you for asking. It is included in that site furnishings line.
Thanks. I guess, you know, personally, I'm not, I'm not opposed to spending, you know, $20 million over eight or 10 years, assuming that, that it's, that we have, that we can do it in a fiscally responsible way. But I also feel that it, for, for this, for this kind of money, I mean, it has the, I think it has the potential to be a spectacular piece of work and something that the, the city can be very proud of. But I think it's also for, for this kind of money, personally, I think it's going to be really important that, that the, that the project's vetted to make sure that we really get the bang for our buck here. And I, I'm inclined to agree with Councilman Young that, you know, having someone, you know, Public Works perhaps, other, other agencies within the city to really look at and say, is this really the best way to spend the money? And if it is, I'm, I'd be totally willing to spend it. But if there's places where we can, you know, economize and, you know, protect the, the, the money for other projects, I think that, I think that it's, it would be a responsible thing for us to, to do that. So, and I'm not, I'm not, I wouldn't be, I'm not proposing, you know, another three years, you know, nickel and diming this thing down. But, but I think it's, I think, I think it should be, I think it's part of our, I would feel responsible to, to make sure that, that we really are spending the money in the best possible way to get the best possible outcome.
I think that makes sense. Thank you.
Let's see, Mayor Pretend, Mayor Pretend first and then Councilmember Rosengard this time?
Two of the things I wanted to add partially to the, to the vetting part is the costs that are, that we've been given are just very high level costs. I would like to see a breakdown of them for more specific things. What are different things going to cost here rather than just this cost for lighting in this part of the area or whatever else? I don't think it's possible to act, to, to do a good job of vetting this without that kind of breakdown. Secondly, I would like to point out that what originally drove the Reimagine Brody Project was lighting Brody Lane. And I wonder if we shouldn't reconsider this a little bit and say, if, if we think that our emphasis was supposed to be on light, lighting Brody Lane, I'd like to see a plan that, that addresses that more rather than sections. I think, for example, you know, the connection of the Violet Crown Trail is nice. I don't think it has the value of lighting Brody Lane.
Councilmember Rosengard?
Councilmember Young, I agree with a lot of things you have said. That 290 right turn lane, that we are now talking about redoing that. I remember in 2009, 2010, that it was redone by the City of Sunset Valley. And I remember how hard it was to get in on Brody Lane because of the work that was being on, being done on it at that time. So imagine every project that we're going to be working on, how it's going to hinder customers coming into the retail center. And it will, yes, if money wasn't an object and you looked at this and you say, wow, that would make everything look so beautiful. We have to take land away from the area that is for parking right now. We have to take some areas that are green right now and make them impervious cover for bikes. I definitely don't want bikes on Brody Lane, so I, I want that set specifically. I don't want anyone on Brody Lane. They should have their own sidewalk or have their own path. But yes, we're taking away green space in order to make another path. The art, I like the idea of art, but it's everybody's perception as to what is the value of that art. The return on investment, exactly what Councilmember Burrell said, for what we're going to be investing on these projects, what will be our return with the retail getting a bigger influx of sales tax revenue is, would be our hope. And yes, we started with, and I mentioned it tonight, we started with the idea, we need more lighting on Brody Lane so that people don't feel that the shopping centers are closed. That's the conversation I always heard, more lighting. But then when we did, started down this path of doing the surveys, et cetera, of course, it's everybody's wish. Because the, the open question was, what would you like to see? Well, when you, when you're asked, what would you like to see? And nobody's talking about money. Absolutely what your wish list is, comes out. And now we're looking at it and it's a whole different perspective when you look at the whole thing together. But thank you for all your work. I do appreciate that. Thanks.
Councilwoman Medicas?
Okay, so, so I did hear that the site furnishing includes art. And, and when I was looking at the designs, I was really thinking that the wayfinding signs and the entry signs were the art. And so maybe we start there. And then I also wanted to, again, I'm in agreement, it's about lighting for me on Brody Lane because that's where we started. And if we can balance that out so we don't have those dark areas, it's, you know, people can't walk. I do think that walking is more important. In our survey, it said, most people don't bike on Brody Lane. There's a good reason. And maybe what we need to focus on is pedestrian traffic as opposed to, well, just a thought, but that's something committees could weigh in on too. And then I know, like in Parks and Open Space Plan, there was that identification of potential funding options. And I didn't see that in this plan. Is that something that there's funding available for? Infrastructure improvements, things of that nature? And what is the cost participation from Violet Crown Trail and, and the other partners that are part of this, the stakeholders?
There are opportunities from organi, like entities like Tech Dot for these sorts of things. And we can take a look at that and, and include it in the implementation plan. I, I can't comment on Violet Crown Trail. I haven't, and Hill Country Conservancy, I haven't been, other than showing them this plan and getting feedback, I haven't been involved in those kind of conversations about cost sharing.
Seems to me we had a meeting with them, Carolyn, I don't rem, was it just with P and E, where they came and talked to us about potentially cost sharing and some of the wayfinding?
Yeah, I think there is a potential that we can cost share with some of the wayfinding where we have costs, like where the Violet Crown Trail and Sunset Valley kind of are intersecting in those areas. I think there was discussion about possible cost share for some of that signage. But some of the other signage obviously would just be on Sunset Valley.
And especially the connection, I think, under that underpass for 290, we should be talking to them about that too.
Yes.
Because that's a hotspot for them as far as safety on that trail. So I, I think that exploring some of those partnerships in getting to what they can participate in as far as funding, adding to the cost of this. But those are my thoughts anyway, lighting and pedestrians rather than lighting pedestrians' bikes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
This has always been called Reimagine Brody, so maybe we should start with a better, like a relighting Brody name next time. And, and again, so the Parks and Open Space project was done by Asakura Robinson, right? And, right, and then, so, I mean, I, I'm seeing these, these two documents or these two approaches pretty similarly where it's like, I, even, even if we had all the money and all the, even if we weren't even going to pay for it ourselves, I wouldn't want to do all this stuff. It's just like, here are some cool things to do. So I don't think anyone should, anyone listening or anyone should walk away from this saying, this is what we're going to do. Because before this was even ready, I had residents saying, we're going to spend all this money on cyclists? It's like, nope, that's not what we're doing. Honestly, there are not that many, I rarely see cyclists and there's not that many people that walk. But the people that do choose to do so, it would be, and we're all those people sometimes, it would make it nicer. So I agree, you know, maybe just collapse it down to one because when a cyclist and a pedestrian kind of cross paths, I mean, I think they just kind of figure it out. They don't need to be separated like we're down around Town Lake or something. Actually, Town Lake doesn't separate them. No, it's just one path. But the, the, this is back to my other questions, the, the raised intersection, have you seen that anywhere else in Austin? I would love to like go check that out at the scale that would potentially be done in Sunset Valley. Can you think of it? I know you, you don't live in Austin, but.
I believe there are some raised crosswalks and intersections at 290 and Airport Boulevard.
Okay.
But I think I can do some research and, and give you some more locations.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And the, the culvert, what, what was the, either it wasn't mentioned or I just missed it?
That is right. Matt, if you could page to, like just at Upper Cougar Creek, oh, there it is actually. It's on this page. So right now, because of the creek. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, right now, because of the creek, the, there's, there's just kind of like a small crossing over the creek here, of, over Upper Cougar Creek. There's a box culvert that's concrete. So the idea would be, and this was part of the Upper Cougar Creek plan too, we were talking about potentially having a pedestrian bridge that would allow for a, a safer, wider crossing that's a little bit more set back from the road. And then eventually that evolved into the idea that we could actually just extend that box culvert to be a little bit wider so that it could accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists a little bit better and be a little bit wider. Tom, did I miss anything? Okay.
Okay, thank you. That's up and out, thanks.
So just a real couple of quick comments. You know, from my perspective, while this, I think, was initiated with some lighting discussions, at its core, it's about safety, right? Lighting is a component of safety. No matter how much lighting you put in there, I don't want to walk down that or bike down that sidewalk that's right next to the road, right? And there's also a question of like, do people use it? Well, maybe they don't use it because it's not safe, right? You know, that's, that's a factor that I think the focus on pedestrian, you know, throughways or, or corridors, bringing that back from the road, improving lighting are two things that are very critical for safety and could help our, you know, shopping centers by drawing traffic, you know, from the trail or from pedestrians who want to access it more easily rather than them saying, okay, now I have to hop in a car, go across the street and, you know, navigate all that. They can park, they can walk, they can do those things. So I just keep that in mind too. And as we talk about safety for pedestrians, I think that was the initial conversations. I, I think expanding it to talk about safety of those intersections, right? Where cars are, whether we slow traffic down, we create, you know, better pathways for, you know, some of the turn lanes. I often see congestion at that Ernest Rabels Brody where it can back up into the, the lanes. So that's impeding traffic flow actually and probably causing people to look at Brody as a less than desirable route, which makes our businesses a less than desirable business from that aspect. They don't want to go down Brody because it can back up or get congested. And so they're less likely to maybe use those, those businesses. How much of that impact is, I don't know, but I can just, you know, see that as an initial improvement as well. And so from my perspective, that safety aspect is certainly something that I want to make sure, that, that I want to make sure that we also keep our focus on. And lighting is a component of that. And I want to make sure that lighting continues to be a core part of, you know, the discussion. But pedestrian safety, I agree, you know, maybe we don't have the need for creating a separate bike lane. I love the idea because I bike and I, I hate biking on, you know, that section of Brody. But, you know, those are things that I want to make sure that we keep in the forefront, or at least I want to keep in the forefront as we go forward. It's not just going to be solved by just improved lighting. I think there are things that we need to do to improve safety in conjunction with lighting. So I think there was another hand raised over here, but maybe you had your hand raised back.
Thank you, Mayor. No, we just, staff, we just wanted to refer back to, so when this, this went to council after, you know, some committee discussions, but Public Works Committee actually made the motion, I think at their April meeting of 2023. And so Carolyn, you, the, the motion that went to council that kicked off this project in May.
So, yeah, it basically said, the committee recommends moving forward with the project on Brody Lane for urban streets to include civil engineering, landscape architecture, lighting and traffic engineering. Separate pedestrian and bike paths are proposed where possible. Consideration should also be given to partnering with the Violet Crown Trail. So that was the, it was a more inclusive project that was recommended that came out of the Public Works Committee. It wasn't just a lighting project at that point.
Did another council member have their hand raised? I can't remember if I saw that. I do want to make sure that we, we take public, public comment and I'd love it, in addition to residents, if there are any business owners that also want to invite themselves to speak in terms of the potential impact or benefits or detriments, right? You know, if they think this is something that, you know, they, we want to make sure that their opinion's included as well. So that opened up for public comments?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Melissa Gonzalez, 26. Mayor, a lot of what you said is resonant to me. As I was listening to the excellent discussion, I came, came up with three Ps. The first one is priorities. I'm kind of concerned with the right sizing of, like what we've learned from this process because we've done a, a lot of these, we used to do a lot of this stuff in-house. And we decided to outsource these kinds of discussions because they did a better job, we thought, of getting everybody to believe that the finger wasn't on the scale. Because we used to have, oh, so-and-so is waiting it for so-and-so. And so, so when we started to outs, outsource these projects, it was because we would bring the community together and say, no, somebody who does this all the time is getting everybody's input. No one's, no, no one's finger is on, on the scale. And so that was why we started doing this. What we potentially lose in this is a project that is the size of the community and escalation. And that, that was certainly a lot of our fears when we started outsourcing these projects. And, and so I think that's, that's a thing that's, that's always in the back of my mind, having been in these for a quarter century plus. And so, so the priorities, I, I do think are lights. But, but long, I've been one of the proponents of this type of project for a really long time, even before I got on council. And people made fun of me for saying, no, the city is responsible for lights and benches and trash cans and those things that say, we're here. And, and this is a different way of saying it. And I, and I like that the community is all saying that in different ways now, but I'm making that noise for a long time. And that's still, to me, the priorities. I do think, as Public Works did, that divided paths, and I even, are, are really important. And I think it even more since I came back from New Zealand, where they really have a whole bunch of them and people use them. And if they're not divided, and even when they are divided, it's scary. You know, especially when they're going backwards from how you want to go. So I, I do think that divided paths are important. And if you spend time, I would encourage all of you, if you haven't spent times on busy divided paths, to all of you, if you haven't spent times on busy divided paths, to do that, and then you want as much space and as much division as possible. Because if we're successful, you want the space. That's, and that's just, that's just reality. And if you don't have it and you have a really busy bike path and people, it is, it is dangerous. And, and so to, so it is important if we can manage it. But in terms of phasing, lights first, because that really is what's going to drive the shopping district and make us look open, you know? So, so I think that's important in terms of priorities. But I do think pathways are important, and I do think that there's a way, it's really just the middle one, because we really do have, if we make, if we make the connections, we actually have a circle over going to Bucci's Donuts, because we understand it's an important destination with small children. But you could go through Academy, you can go on the north end with a fairly wide sidewalk. It's just the center one that, where ERW hits, that doesn't have it. And when they're saying that there's limited, there is none. You are cutting through their property and you're walking in the landscaping. That's, that is the way through, if you want to walk that way. Okay, so that's priorities. The next one is the process, and I really do think that if we do this in the future, to be aware of that concern of the outsourcing being in line with the size of the project that the community is really going to get excited about. I think we need to engage with committees more and engage with perhaps a couple of council members who are making sure that it's tied. So I think that's important in terms of process. And I do have some concerns, because I was very surprised to find our city engineers on this project. Because in our other projects, when we did that, and I think there might be a legal reason for this, is that people who plan and people who execute are generally different. And I, and I have heard in other projects that we're having people who are helping with the planning are not going to be the ones who are executing it. And so I, I may be confused, but I certainly thought I had heard that in, in previous things, that people who plan do not execute. And, and the numbers certainly concern me as I was glancing at them. Anyway, so that's, that's about my third one, which is price. So, so that's process and price. So I, I don't think that people who are planning should be people who are executing, and I think in other, isn't that correct, sir, that we, when we do projects like that, we don't generally have the same ones?
Let me clarify that.
Yeah.
Engineering is planning. The engineering is part of the plan. So when we were talking about that right there, that was the construction. It's not a design-build kind of process. It's a, when it was, when we were talking about what you were referencing, it had to do with planning it and then bidding on the construction of the project. It had nothing to do with designing the project and, and that, that part of it. It had to do with the construction of the project.
Okay, well, there is a, there is a thing in my mind about that functionally, then, in terms of how that goes, and numbers. So I'll be happy to do that offline with people if they want to hear my comments on that. So, but anyway, I, I do think that a good thing that happened out of this is that there was a lot of excitement. I think that MEND accurately captured the, the character of the community. So I do feel like we got a successful vision out of this project, and, and that I, that I, I like that we, we captured the rustic qualities. For me, I believe in, in the, in the vision that MEND has presented, I have problems a little bit, like I articulated about the process in, in ways that I think we can tighten things up, but in terms of, of the actual heart, I do feel like MEND has cared for the heart of us and has presented things that, that has truthfully taken the views of our community and presented them. So with, with, you know, so we learned some things, and I, I hope we take the lessons that I think that maybe some of us have, and, and take the good vision that, that MEND has facilitated for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My on? Yep. So Justin Triviana, we have the property at sixty-four oh five Brody, the very last property in Sunset Valley with the new development project, and we're, we love this. I mean, this is great. I understand money's real, but for us, I mean, you know, when you drive down Brody at night, it's dark, it's a little bit scary, and I've kind of heard that from everyone, so that's a concern that we have even with our site. And so, I mean, this whole concept, I mean, it was great to see, a lot of the, the things that people were drawn to are the same things that, like, our, our architects and our design team also found. So it was just kind of good to see that, and so for us, I mean, we love this. And my, my background's actually in finance, and I did a lot of work in kind of the retail and hospitality sector, and that was doing like financial analysis, but also looking at kind of these big national companies and the stuff that they did. And so just, I know that the lifeblood of the city is the retail center, and I know there's new developments going throughout Austin, and so when I look at a project like this, this is kind of like modernizing the retail sector. And so just something to kind of think about, because like, when you look at like new retail, instead of being just these like big box kind of shopping things that you drive to, the newer model, at least when I was doing this, and this is admittedly ten, ten years or so ago, but it was more of like you kind of go to a destination where it's, it's almost like a, a village where people are walking between the shops. And so it was just kind of like a modern take, and I think you're probably seeing that in some of these new big retail developments coming up in Austin. And so it's just, when I look at this, this is like, this is like a, this would invite those big national retailers to want to be a part of it, I would think. It's just something that I, I don't know, in my mind, I, so we love it. I understand money's real, and you got to kind of think about the cost thing, so, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. So Council, some of the feedback that I've heard, and of course, if anybody else wishes to speak, they, they can step up so we can recognize them, but taking this as a next step to committees so that they can look at this in more detail, especially if we have a more detailed cost breakdown for those committees. Reevaluating this is potentially starting with an emphasis on lighting and potentially focus on pedestrian pathways or, or, or safety. And coming back with, you know, whether that's a recommendation from those committees as a next step for, for council, or maybe even a, a working group, you know, that comes out of combined committees, that might be another idea, too, just to say, it's sometimes is difficult to take a committee that meets on a monthly schedule to really focus in on a plan, you know, and say, this is, you know, recommendations coming out of it, because they meet once a month, there's typically other things on the agenda, and that process, of course, you know, to Councilmember Burrell's point, we don't want this to be a long process before we start really thinking about what are those concrete things that we want to begin with, what are the next steps for those, especially if there's other agencies that we have to, that we coordinate with, which can take a long time. I think that, I agree with, you know, with Melissa in saying that this is an exciting thing, right? You know, I think that, you know, the feedback that I've gotten, you know, of course, cost being one of those kind of concerns, but everybody seems to be very positive about investing in this corridor, because they see both a benefit to, you know, the, the environments, you know, the, the, kind of the, the markings and the, the identification of the city. But it's just, it's, it's kind of that promise of saying, you know, we're making our city, we're upgrading our city to, to make it more attractive, and that's in turn, you know, ideally, we're going to be driving more business to the retail centers, and that's where we want to be, right? You know, that's, that's certainly where I think a lot of this potentially could benefit. So I think just from my recommendations for directions, this, ideally, we would take this next to both Public Works and to P and E for further discussion. I am a little concerned about, you know, the timing of that and how frequently they can meet, and so potentially, I think there's some consideration to say, you know, maybe there's a, a need for an ad hoc committee to really examine this, drawing parameters of both, or maybe there's two ad hoc committees, one focused on the civil side, one focused on, you know, the other needs. That's a potential that we could go down, you know, after having the committees initially look at it. I think having another engagement with potentially MEND and the, the project team in terms of how we might reshape this based on council feedback to say, you know, what does the phase one, you know, focus on lighting look like? You know, what are some of the improvements that we can do? I think some of those things you have to wait until you actually have a path, you know, defined, because you can't just put lighting in and then later on, you move the path, and suddenly your, your lighting is not, you know, sequenced or, or appropriate with that. However, you know, I think there's some more emphasis on the lighting in saying, where is that, where is that really, that, that core path going to be in the development, rather than maybe some of the other, the other things that are here? I will point out that, you know, one of the things that I think is probably on the stretch side of things is that, both from the feasibility with Text Dot and with the value, is that, that underneath corridor improvements, I think that it's, it's a nice or, it's one of the things that we have some very little control, I understand, right, in terms of what we can do there. It's, it's nice if we have some potential to work with the ideas here, but that's also, I, I would point out that that's, what, three point five million dollars of the project cost? Is it just that underneath corridor right there? So maybe it's not worth, you know, that, that investment, and that lops off a huge, you know, portion of the cost just from a perspective of, these other investments are probably more worthwhile to me and to the city. Unfortunately, I, I hate, you know, that, that underpass, you know, just because it's, it's unattractive, it's obviously, you know, something that I wish we could improve, but, you know, there may be some restraints there, but it's also a big price tag, right? You know, in terms of the value, so. So I think we can, you know, obviously, I think those next steps are what I heard, if there's some other additional suggestions that people have or thoughts on, you know, how they'd like to proceed with process, we'll start with Councilmember Johnson.
We all saw in the administrative, or, sorry, the Public Works staff report, like, they're doing a ton of stuff right now, and so they're, they're pretty, like, capped. What, even if we said we're not going to go to committee or anything else, like, what is the earliest that any of these things could even start? I, I don't have a, I, I like our committees, and I think it's good to get it in front of them, but I don't want to go, I don't want to see it draw out too long, but I also want to understand that even if everything lined up perfectly, when could we even start any of these things?
So I would say that, I mean, this would be just for our planning, starting the planning of any part of any phase, wouldn't start until FY twenty-five.
Yeah.
So we would be finishing up hopefully a lot of other projects at around that time, before this would even really kick off. And it would be going into that kind of schematic design, construction kind of planning phase. As far as like construction, that's still, you know, a year or two away.
Yeah.
So it, it would, it would not be something we would be doing very quickly, because it, this is going to be a big project. And I think one of the reasons kind of we phased it, and some of the ways we kind of looked at it was like, one A, that east side sidewalk was going to have some of the least amount of impact right off the bat, two, like, flow and people driving and things like that, but it would have a great, like, beautification and, like, impact to pedestrian kind of walkability and stuff, and lighting throughout that whole area that we're looking at. So I think that's kind of like what we were looking at with that, how we could ma- make a fairly large impact without having the, you know, pain of construction impact that we would be experiencing with some of the other sections.
I, I was actually thinking about, there's a ton of stuff in here that we could, we could do for not that much money, and it would probably be most impactful to the people that are most concerned about safety besides, like, any changes to the, to the actual roads. So I, I don't know, we can, and, and also, one of the differences between this and Parks and Open Space was, Parks and Open Space was like new things that we were going to build. So I understand that those were kind of like big things to bite off, you know, whereas this, it's mostly infrastructure that's already there, and it's just how do we kind of massage it to be a little bit safer and gussy it up a little bit? So, but yeah, I mean, public safety will also take it. We like talking about, uh, safety.
I mean, just one real quick note, because we talked about that Phase One A. I, I imagine that if we went through this iteration and the committees gave their feedback, and we, we focused on a lot of, you know, the lighting as part of that, my sense is that we'd be eighty percent, you know, of Phase One A is close to like what we're, what we need in terms of, you know, having the, the impact for the, the safety of pedestrians and the lighting in those areas, which is where we started, right? So I, I think that's, from my, just sort of like, you know, perspective, we're really close in terms of like that, that Phase One A trail and the lighting that would be improving there. There's minor adjustments that I've heard people talk about, saying, well, do we really need separated, you know, lanes? You know, how do we get, you know, make sure we have right-of-way concerns taken up? What is the impact to impervious cover? We would be removing a sidewalk and adding more landscaping on that side, but of course, you know, we're talking about a wider pass, so that's, that's going to have some impact. You know, so I, that's just my general sense is that, you know, that Phase One A is where, kind of where we started with lighting, right? And it incorporates pedestrian safety. So I don't think, I wouldn't say that we're too far off on, on that section, but again, we want to get further feedback, so. Mayor Potem, did you have your hand raised, or was it Councilmember Rosenberg?
I was going to ask definitely that it be sent to budget and finance also?
Yeah, and is that something where, I think we have a more detailed breakdown of the costs, but I think we, yeah. So that's something we could take to the committees, too, and, and start getting, okay. Yeah, I think if we take it to public safety, budget and finance, P and E, you know, I, I think all these committees would be able to weigh in on, on certain components and just say, you know, what they like, what they don't like, you know, and get, try to draw a little bit closer consensus for, for these elements, so. And maybe it's presented in pieces in some ways, right? So we can focus on the lighting and the pedestrian first, or...
So, kind of thinking along those lines, I mean, if you think about the lighting on Brody, the Market Fair has a lot of overspillage of light, so the kind of west side of Brody is a little bit brighter by default than the east side of Brody, where we're talking about Phase One A, because the Village Shopping Center homeset, everything's much further back, and there's a lot more kind of trees and green spaces in the front that creates a lot more, like, there's, there's not as much lighting in, throughout that area. What if, instead of trying to take everything, the whole plan to all these committees to do, what if we just did Phase One A and kind of take that and have that be the description? Because that's really what we'd be proposing, is something to move forward with, is something in that kind of, kind of thing. Versus trying to get the committee to, or get five committees to wrap their head around the entire project at one time.
No, I, I agree, and I think it's better if we have them focused, because, you know, from my, my perspective, that the sort of natural place to start is the one that is going back to those core areas where we, we said we need to improve, have improved lighting, that's where we went on our night walk, and we could see, you know, the, the kind of the safety issues with crossing those paths, that, starting to improve the lighting and get less of that spillage, and it also just has a, a minimal impact, right? You know, in terms of, you know, the interruptions to, to Home Depot. And I like that, it kind of goes back to that philosophy that Mayor Potem and some of the council members mentioned, is that the open spa, parking space, or, you know, the open space planning had its, you know, like a menu, right, of things that we could look at. And I think if we started looking at this as kind of breaking out into those menu pieces, you know, Phase One A is a, an item in the menu, and it seems like that's the one that has the most, you know, impact as well as the viability, right? You know, from, from a lot of perspectives. And I think if we do, you know, these initial conversations are focused on the, the subsections that we would likely start with, right? And getting feedback and saying, is there, you know, what are the things we need to consider as we're doing this? It makes it easier for those committees to really give us valuable feedback, rather than necessarily looking at a huge project with a huge cost estimate, you know, and, we know that the feedback is going to be more diffuse, right? And I think harder to really capture the focused feedback on, on specific subsections. And then we can take the next section, you know, to committees of when we're, when it's the appropriate time to, to start considering, do we want to continue on with, you know, basically, does council want to, you know, prioritize another aspect of this that, you know, would assist road safety or vehicle, traffic safety, or that west side safety and corridor, which, yeah, I, I mean, I hate the east side sidewalk. I never go on the west side sidewalk because it's just, it's, you know, it's right, again, it's like one of those things, the slope and even getting across there is like, like you mentioned, difficult, so. Councilmember Magus?
I agree, I think it makes sense to, similar to the Parks and Open Space, there was a, a big picture of all the property that the city has, and then we could take it piece by piece. You can't eat a whole pie at one time, so you have to slice it up, right? Or maybe you guys can. But, so, so you got to slice it up into pieces that people can digest, right? And, and so I think it's important to, to take that, like, okay, phase one, that, that's a starting point to get something done. I, I agree, I think it's important for us to do some, to move forward, to keep those blocks moving forward all the time, but one piece at a time. And so I think that this part is really exciting, because there's some things I think we can do here, especially with signage, that can really, you know, bump it up a lot and make it look a lot better. Signage and lighting and, and the trails, even if, you know, the underpass is ugly, but if you come out of that and then you see all these beautiful signs and lights, you're in a, you're already in a different... see all these beautiful signs and lights, you're in a, you're already in a different world, you know? So I think that's, that's the way to go.
Point out is that this first phase also ties nicely with the work on Upper Cougar Creek, where, where we would have a way of tying to that project that's already underway and is intended to augment and enhance the commercial areas by having a, a open space for people to explore while they're, you know, exploring the shopping centers, so.
Yeah, makes sense.
Mayor Potem?
I wanted to comment on what you said about concentrating on phase 1A first. And what I'd like to suggest is, you, you need to have a little bit of the bigger picture. So what I'd like to suggest is when we go to committees, we, here's an overview of phase one, will you concentrate on phase 1A? But at least so they have the context for what phase 1A is about.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so another piece, and if we do, I, I do think it is appropriate, yes, the committee, and as people are vetting this, you need to see the whole picture, but, you know, phase 1A, I think we're all kind of in agreement, is a good start. Another piece is, and I know you all have only seen a summary of the opinion of probable costs, these are just the construction costs. One thing we also have to keep in mind is the ongoing maintenance, right, of what, what is the ongoing operational cost going to be of these improvements to the city. And we really haven't had time to, to dive into that yet, but one example is lighting, right? We, we all know we need additional lighting, we need better lighting on Brody Lane. And meeting with Austin Energy, so the, the sparse street lighting we do have on Brody right now is maintained by the City of Austin. Once we get into, unless we select streetlights that are standard to Austin, which it sounds like the community doesn't, we want, you know, bollard lighting, we want, you know, we want custom lighting. The City of Sunset Valley then takes on responsibility for the ongoing maintenance of those lights. So we need to make sure we don't get too fanciful or custom with the, with the lights. And so we'll have to work with our, you know, our, our consultants on, on selecting the best light, but also maintenance of that light. And that's probably not, you know, maybe some can be done in-house, but most likely that's going to be a contract, that, you know, an annual contract for light maintenance. And the same has to be applied to landscaping, right? Whatever landscaping we put in, you know, is that text escapes, is that in-house? What, you know, what is that, what is the maintenance moving forward of, of the landscape?
Councilmember Medikas?
To that point, I think it, you know, looking at just this basis, we're not even thinking about that in looking at these numbers. But that's a really good point. And I think to that point also is that the stakeholders are committees are stakeholders, but the stakeholders that are City of Austin, Travis County, all those other stakeholders that have a piece of Brody Lane are, are stakeholders that we need to have good communication with and talk about those things.
I will say, because I, I heard it come up often, and we did invite, we have, you know, we work and communicate often with the, mostly with the management of Market Fair and Village. Homestead, the manager is, is out of state, and it's very hard to get a hold of them. But, you know, we've, we've worked for years with, it's been the same manager for, for the Village. And they, there's a new manager for Market Fair, and she's really energetic and excited. We've, we've shared Reimagined Brody with her. Again, the more, you know, once, once you're talking about easements and major improvements, that has to go then up, up the food chain, right? But, you know, again, we've heard from Market Fair, they're not planning on, they're planning on some cosmetic improvements in 2026, they're not planning on any kind of major remodel. They're actually this week working on repaving over at Market Fair. But, yeah, we would hope that making these improvements would encourage them to then make your shopping center more walkable. But I don't know if they're going to do that until they're ready to fully remodel. But to what Justin Trubiana said, that's exactly what Kim Ko told us. They said they're, all of their shopping centers are moving away from how ours look essentially with the sea of parking lot and then the shops. They're moving more towards, they call it like the town center, where everybody, you know.
Parking garage.
You know, and then you, and then you get out and you walk to the shops. That's, that's, that's the future of, that's where retail has been moving and, and is moving. So just wanted to comment on that.
Councilmember Johnson?
And I will say from the other side, I just had to drop someone off at the Domain earlier today, and I hated every second of it. I hate it. I, I absolutely hate it.
I hate it too.
It's like, there's a stop sign every five feet, and it's just like, give me, and I'm, I don't know, I lived in like big cities, so I get being able to just like walk around and not have to deal with a car, but give me this any day of the week.
It's not my favorite example either. I like South Lake up near Dallas. That's, that's kind of nicely designed.
So Council, it sounds like the next step, we wanted this to go to be explored by the committees, an overview of, you know, phase one at least, but then with a focus on phase 1A to get their feedback. I think we, we can work with staff and MEND, we can work together to take some of the feedback and iterate, you know, on next steps. And I think that those are the, the main directions. We also want to make sure we have the cost breakdown, which we do, and we provide that as part of the, the committees as well. I also just want to echo, thank you, MEND, thank you, Freeman Turk, you know, Freeth Lenterk for the, the hard work that was put into this. You know, I think this is one of those things that having a vision for the city is a wonderful starting place, where all now have a place that we can go to, to, to look at that vision and, and, and take it to what the next steps are appropriate for our city. Again, it's very similar to the open park, Parks and Planning or open, open space and Parks Plan. You know, for me, where I think with, it's, it's hard for us to really conceive of what we can do until we see that vision laid out. And I think everybody can, it sounds like there's consensus that it's great to have this, it's great to engage the community, there's excitement around this. And it's just about finding the appropriate way to proceed. So, thank you for all the hard work. Any other comments from council? Any other comments from staff? Anything we need to cover that we didn't cover? Anything that's not clear as far as next steps or direction? Thank you all again. With that, I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Medikas?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, we adjourned at 8:47 PM.